Ready to go.
Done.
Okay.
Read lines.
Good evening, this is the May 25th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have a reserve decision, appeal number 2023-009, inshore construction company, 61 Main Road, Riverhead, for variances and relief from chapter 301, 80-a, where proposed building lot coverage is 24.88, maximum allowed is 20. Chapter 301-80A, where proposed floor area is 0.4986, maximum allowed is .20. Chapter 301-80A, where proposed lot width is 157.35 feet, minimum permitted is 200. And chapter 301-79, self storage facility is not a permitted use within the CRC zoning. Be approved, thank you, in accordance with the application schedules with amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector, do your emotion.
So move, Mr. Jones.
Second.
All right, Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been passed and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Off you go.
Appeal 2022-047, Sherry Kai, 111 Second Street, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-92-6-1, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from town code, chapter 301-15A1B. Where proposed 43.3 foot side accessory setback, minimum allowed 50 feet. Chapter 301-15A1C, where proposed five foot rear accessory setback, minimum allowed is 20 feet. This was adjourned from April 27, 2023.
Good evening, board. You've been sworn in before, just stating?
I have, yes.
Yeah, just state your name and your address.
Sure, it's Anthony Portillo, 10200, Main Road, Matatuck, New York, 11952.
You have the floor.
Thank you, actually, the elevations that were revised was, they were not submitted and we were told we could just bring them in, so I have the, a copy.
Bring them on up.
Okay, and then I have the affidavits as well, or the mail-ins.
Give the affidavits to Tracy, please.
Oh, sure. So, I believe I presented this to the board and at that time, there were just discrepancies on the, maybe discrepancies is not the right word, but there's some things that were on the denial letter that needed to come off because the board couldn't make a decision, so on, and that did happen, and now we're just requesting the relief for the yard variances or the area variances. So, the site plan and floor plans have not changed. The revisions to the elevations, which I presented to, are based on comments that we received from the landmarks. Sorry, am I not, is that better?
That's good.
Okay, sorry. So, basically, the, the original design was a little more modern, they didn't really think it fit the characteristic of the neighborhood, so we just designed it more in line with, you know, shingle style type of design. So that's the reason for the revision. In regards to the application of the area variances, so, we are requesting to add an accessory structure for garage. There is an existing garage on this property that fronts Green Street. That garage is existing non-conforming and really is just in a bad position, so that's, that's the reasoning for putting the garage more on the secondary side street, which is Second Street. And the existing driveway will remain on Green Street, but she would, the applicant would like to use the accessory building for parking her car.
So you're saying the existing garage is not going to be demolished?
No, no, it is being demolished, that's the reason for the application for the new garage.
I got you, okay.
There, you know, there is an intent, there, you can see by the plans that in the future, you know, in three years, she'd like to request the accessory apartment above the accessory building, so she does have that intent and she understands the code and so on, so I just want to state that for the record. The other thing is, you can see, we located the approximate location of the existing septic tank. We are applying for a new septic system, that one's going to be removed or abandoned due to the fact of the location, and it is accessible, so we want to put in something that's, the owner would like to put in something more suitable. She, it is her full-time residence. And if you look down Second Street, it's pretty common that accessory buildings are close to the side yard. I have a good reference of an approved application. So, 144 Second Street received a relief in, on 6822, and the board did approve 8.4 foot side yard setback with a minimum 20 foot. And there wasn't, on this property, there, I guess there was an existing shed that was legalized, that was six feet from the property line, so just, you know, pretty common on Second Street to see accessory buildings closer to the side yard. So if the board has any questions, I can answer, comments, thank you.
Is anyone out in the audience have any questions? Anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? All right, guys. Do we have something?
This has Landmark's approval? That was the question.
Yeah. No, so, no, sir, so we, we went to Landmark's, received the comments that I explained in the beginning, made the adjustments, this, I believe I'm at Landmark's next week, I believe is the date, but I believe that, I mean, they basically, this was all that they commented really on, was just the shape of the building, I, I think this is going to meet their requirements, based on my conversation with them, but.
So we'll have to do a reserve decision then?
No problem, thank you.
Nobody else to be heard on this matter, let's move it on to the next meeting.
I have it right here.
Moving along.
So, appeal number 2022-047, I move that the appeal of Sherry Kai, 111 Second Street, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map 600-92.6-1, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from town code, chapter 301-15A1B, where proposed 43.3 side accessory setback, minimum allowed is 50 foot. Chapter 301-15A1C, where proposed five foot rear accessory setback, where minimum allowed is 20 foot, be reserved for a reserve decision.
So move, second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so see you next meeting.
Great, no problem.
Thank you.
Tracy, what's the date of the next meeting?
Juni.
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 Thank you.
Appeal 2023-013, Coral Lee Bayfront LLC, 20 Phyllis Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-70-2-50.3, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301-17, where proposed side yard 6.4 feet, when minimum 25 feet required. Chapter 301-17, where proposed combined side yard 13.3 feet, when minimum 55 feet required, and chapter 301-15A1C, where proposed accessory structure setback 6.3 feet, when minimum 20 feet required. This was adjourned, I'm sorry, required, this was adjourned from March 23, 2023.
We're going to have the mail-ins and the affidavit for this. I'd also just like to give this to the board. I'm sorry.
We're just waiting on from the last meeting too? Again, just state your name.
I apologize.
Right, just state your name and your address.
Yeah, it's Anthony Portillo, architect, we're at 10200, Main Road, Matatuck, New York, 11952.
Off you go.
Thank you very much. So, just some, some things that, did some analysis and looked at a few things off of Google Maps, based on like, what we talked about in the last hearing, which I'll remind the board, based on what I remember, but I just want to hand this to you guys.
Sure. So, I wanted to mention that someone had made claim that the posting was not accurate. Did that come up in a conversation with anybody, with you? Are you aware of that?
I, I heard that when I walked in.
You have to go back to the mic, I'm sorry.
So, I, to answer your question, I did hear that when I walked in, briefly. I called my office before I stepped up to the last application, and I'm informed that we did post last week on Tuesday, and that's what our affidavit says on it.
Okay.
So, I, I could, if I have to find, I do have a photo, but it's not stamped, it wasn't timestamped for that date, so I, I have to find out from my office if the board needs me to provide that.
Okay, well, later in the hearing, maybe someone else will dispute that, I don't know.
I, I think that's probably going to be the case, and.
I don't know that, but just be aware of it.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Okay, so proceed.
So, at the last hearing, there were some concerns from the neighbors, the board asked that we reach out to the neighbors, have a meeting with the applicants and the neighbors, we did that, we, we did meet, not with all the neighbors, just because of trying to get everybody in a room, it was, it was difficult, so we met with the neighbor that's immediately to the east. We did have an email chain and we did share how we were trying to adapt the project to kind of meet some of the comments from the neighbors. I do see that the neighbors are here again tonight, and I'm not sure exactly who's going to have comments, positive or negative, but I'll just want to explain to the board of what we did, and I think, I think we did accomplish things here, and I'll explain what we did. So, the first things we did is, we got rid of the infinity edge on the pool, we're just proposing a pool. We've sort of narrowed the accessory structure in the rear, and we've pulled it closer to the house, and we're using it as sort of a shield to shield the pool from the neighboring lot, which I thought was a good idea, kind of gives you a sound buffer, I know that that was something that was mentioned. We are, we are proposing to have subsurface space below the poolhouse or accessory structure in the rear, that we would like to put the pool equipment in, so we are trying to create a situation to reduce the, as, the sound as much as possible off of the pool area. We've sort of, we've, we've taken the garage that's attached, I'm sorry, going back to the accessory structure in the rear, we also have taken it off of the side yard, so it was 14, we're at 10 feet now, so we've, we've now reduced the encroachment by about approximately four feet, 3.7 feet. And then, and then we took the, the proposed attached garage, which was in our first proposal at 1.9 feet from the side yard, and we've, we've, we changed the orientation of how you enter the garage, so that allowed us to narrow it and kind of push it off of the side yard, and that got us to 6.4 feet off of the side yard from the original proposal, 1.9 feet. The other things we attempted on this, if, on the, on the elevation, the main home on our first proposal, I had a nine pitch, I changed it to an eight pitch, so was able to kind of bring the scale of the house down, because there was some comments about like overshadowing other homes, so again, you know, I think an eight pitch is pretty common, maybe nine was a little bit steep, so I thought, why can't we try to do that, get the scale down of the home. I, the, what I handed to the board, I did do a little bit of research on pools in rear yards off the bluff, and you can see that, you know, I did find three homes, just based on Google Maps, that I, there were pools located in the rear yards, so I, I know that was a comment last time, having pools in rear yards. We also did like, basically a, a study, just to kind of understand, you know, the positioning of the, of the proposed home and the, and the pool and the poolhouse, and, and also, what I did is I, I, I left the existing structure on there, so you can sort of see how the existing structure, you know, the existing structure location, everything we're proposing is landword of what is existing there now. So, you know, if, if anything, I think we're, you know, we're, we're less encroachment on the bluff, and we're really trying to keep this house back, which, you know, I think from, from that sort of diagram of like, someone standing at the corner of the house, that's sort of their, that's sort of their view shed, you know, it, the current house really blocked a lot of that view shed, and what we're proposing is, is really not blocking that view shed at all, and, and you can also just see, based on this, this map, the, the houses that are pretty much adjacent and two doors down, you know, they're very tight up against the side yards, I, I mean, again, I think it's a very common, common thing in, in this area, you know, to have small side yards, and, and just the existing home itself is, is, is on one side yard, and the other side yard's a little bit, you know, it's further away, but, but I think we sort of centered the home in our, in our approach, so that we're kind of sharing the side yards. So, that's the things that we've revised, and the reasoning behind why we revised them, and we did take the comments from the neighbors, and we tried to do our best to meet those.
Anthony, you're knocking down the old house?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, let's hear what the neighbors have to say.
Of course. Oh, I, I can give you this one. I don't, I don't need this.
I'll give you mine.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to let you know too, the applicants are, are here as well, and they might want to, you might want to hear from the applicants.
Okay, well, let's, let's hear from the neighbors first. Step up. Anthony, kindly raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Jen Beshel, I live at 1379 Pecanic Bay Boulevard, Jamesport, New York, 11947.
Okay.
So, thank you again for taking the time to hear our concerns regarding the proposed teardown, complete footprint repositioning, and significant expansion of the property on 12 Phyllis Lane by Coral Lee Bayfront LLC. We respectfully ask that the board consider the following. Who is allowed access to an open sky? How many houses must you buy? Two houses, or three, or even four? Does the desire for more and more by a limited liability company, a business structure, on a country lane supersede the property rights of a family residing there full-time? To be clear, we own one, one house total, it's the only place from which we can look out onto the world through our windows. We've provided you a rendering of that view from the very first home we purchased just this past January, after years of saving and searching, and what will be, should this plan go ahead. Can anyone really suggest that being loomed over by a large adjacent structure, out of character with the neighborhood, will not diminish the value of our property, and more importantly to us, our ability to quietly enjoy it, does might make right? The members of this LLC can look at the unobstructed sky from the current house on 12 Phyllis Lane, or 23 Phyllis Lane, or 35 Phyllis Lane, as they have bought them all up, or perhaps they can do some from their primary residence, not included in this list. Would these properties too, need to be further expanded? We ask how much square footage is enough? The LLC behind these alteration to the lane's character might argue that they have made significant modifications to the original proposal. There is a concept in sales called the door-in-the-face technique, when you want to push through a particularly unappealing or unnecessary prospect for a buyer. The first proposal is so outrageous that whatever you follow up with may seem more reasonable by comparison. We believe that is what is happening here. It does not change the fact that if the plans were to go ahead as drawn, we'll never see another southwestern sky from our home again, which continues to feel pretty outrageous to us. Another way to put this is that the house on 12 Phyllis Lane as it currently stands is 149 feet from our deck, almost half a football field away. The proposed build, approximately 15 feet, a mere five yards, that's over 130 feet closer and at least twice as high. We acted in good faith after the last board hearing, emailed the architect on April 3rd with our details, including the supplied rendering, and provided our concerns. We did not hear back until April 18th, when we were told that the meeting would go ahead April 22nd. We arranged our schedule to attend in person, and our attempts to be more inclusive for other concerned parties by asking for inclusion of a Zoom link were rebuffed initially. We were then notified at 5:03 PM on April 21st, that the April 22nd meeting was canceled, and that the new meeting was to be midday, midweek, with two days' notice, not sufficient time for us to reschedule our days as we are working people. This rescheduled meeting was then moved again with one day's notice, and rescheduled for again, midday, midweek. We did email our concerns in an effort to be heard, and the full response from the LLC member captures the tone. Please submit the plans as drawn, we are satisfied with the adjustments we have made, and we are not open to any further modifications. We included the full correspondence with the architect's office in our letter for your perusal. We do not believe the parties representing Coral Lee Bayfront LLC wherever, nor will they ever be open to addressing our concerns. We did ask that perhaps some of their structures might be moved towards the west side of the 12 Phyllis Lane lot. You too may have noticed that they have positioned all the proposed new build elements along the easternmost side of the 12 Phyllis Lane boundary. Are they more concerned for the neighbors directly to the west? We think yes, yes, because they are their neighbors directly to the west, also owning that adjoining property. For years, we saved for our first home, and this process has brought tension and honestly sadness to what should have been a fun and exciting time. While we do understand that the zoning board cannot teach kindness, in addition to being arbiters of what is allowable under town code, you are also, in a manner, arbiters of courtesy, you do get to decide. Does the LLC member's desire to have an attached garage on their at least third investment property for a sum of over 7,500 feet of, square feet of habitable space, 4,410 feet of which is the new build, crowding one country lane, override our right to look at the sky from the door of our thousand-square-foot home? We will again end with the fact that other area properties have been successfully and sympathetically updated. This has been done with respect for the character of the area, and staying within the footprint of the property's original buildings. We respectfully ask that the current request for variances on 12 Phyllis Lane be rejected outright by the zoning board due to these concerns. We would also like to invite the board members to our home, to our deck, and to see the view as it is, and to understand how severely impacted our little lane would be should these plans go forward. Thank you again, very sincerely, for your time and consideration.
I have a question, how are you, this survey or whatever here? If we're staying behind all these homes, looking towards the bay, which side of this property are you on, right or left?
Uh, we're towards the east.
So this property, okay. And then, can I ask you another question? In the rendering, that, you, you sent this to us?
Yes.
That's looking at, where is that visually? Is that looking northwest out of your, front of your house?
That's looking southwest from the deck of our house.
From the back of your house. So I'm perplexed. Yeah, could you come up here a moment? I'm sorry. It's a.
So here, this little house.
Okay, you're back here.
It's a little house.
Okay.
And so that's taken from exactly right there.
Okay, that's what we had wrong here, this is your house, this is not part of your property. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's up next? Go ahead, you're up. Let me just see if there are any other neighbors.
Oh, I'm sure there are, but I, can I re, can I?
Oh yeah, sure, you want to respond, sure.
If there's like three or four.
Well, they're all different concerns, I just want to make straight up.
All right.
So I just want to state a few things for the board, in my opinion. I don't think the number of properties that are owned by my clients have anything to do with the variances that we're requesting, so I just want to put that out there. I also want to state that we're not asking for a lot coverage variance, we're not asking for any height restrictions. The side yard variances that we're requesting are because of the, the lot is very narrow, so there is a reason that we have, we don't have room, there really is virtually no way to build a building on this lot. So, and, and I understand the concerns of the neighbor, we, we actually, like I said, we brought, we took the garage further off of that side yard, and we've also moved the home further away from this neighbor's home. One thing to state too, I have a map of the area, that, that, that home in particular is basically right on the property line, the, the existing home that's there. So, we're actually requesting further from the plot line than what their existing house is, and that includes the neighbor that's in front of them, they're, the, the homes are just very close to the lot lines, that's very common. One thing is the comment about moving the home more to the west property line, these are two different lots, the neighbor does, the client, my client does own the other lot and the other home, but they have every right to sell that one day, or they have every right to sell this one day, whatever their plans are, right? So, my point is, is I think the way that the home is plotted, would, in the respects to the narrowness of this lot, is correct, because we're sharing the distance from the property lines. We're not any wider than the current building, just the current building is, you know, a two feet off of the west property line, and then 13 feet off of the east property line, but we're just sort of centering it and keeping that same width, so I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
All right. Any other neighbors? Step up. And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Henry Kohler. I'm at thirteen ninety-two Peconic Bay Boulevard, which is a home that my sister Janet and I own.
Okay. In relation to the house, which, where are you?
We are just east of the house, and we are in front of the house of the person who just spoke.
Okay.
So we're on the bay, and we have a bay view from our porch.
Okay.
I'd like to say that at the first meeting regarding this variance, the people opposed to the Corley LLC plan were asked by the Zoning Board of Appeals to meet with the architect and/or the LLC to resolve the issues that we were objecting to. On April twenty-fifth, I alone met with Anthony Portillo and Tracy Fallon. We reviewed the concerns that my sister and I had, and I was told the following at that meeting. One, regarding the stormwater runoff and potential flooding of our garage and basement, which is something I brought up at the very first meeting. Anthony said that gutters and dry walls would be installed on all structures and that the pool hardscape will not be impermeable. If this is true, and I can't tell by looking at the new plan submitted, then we no longer object to the, to this plan on the basis of flooding. If it's not true, then we continue to object.
It's required by the code anyway.
It is, okay.
Yes, and the building inspector, and it can be a condition in our pool.
Okay. Number two, regarding the pool noise from pumps and infinity pool waterfall. Anthony spoke about this a moment ago, but Anthony said that they would excavate a basement under the pool house and that the pumps would be installed there. He said the pool is not going to be an infinity pool. If this is true, and the new plan indicates that the pool equipment will be beneath the pool house and that the pool is not described as an infinity pool, as it was on the first original plan, then we no longer object on the basis of pool noise. Number three, regarding the privacy on our back patio. There is a master bedroom on the second floor that overlooks our patio and kitchen and dining room. Our house is one, is, as was just stated by Anthony, one foot from the property line. So if you look at the, at the new drawing, you'll see a master bedroom overlooking our back patio and our kitchen and dining room windows and straight into our second-floor bedroom window. Anthony said at the meeting that there will not be a balcony off of that bedroom. That was a concern. There's not one on the plan. I don't see that. I don't know that, that means that can't happen at some point, but if this is true and there is no balcony there and that is just a bedroom with curtains, uh, and it's only a bedroom and not a sitting room with a view of our patio, then we don't object on the basis of privacy. And the last one is regarding the proximity of the pool house to our front porch and it's blocking our view of the bay. Anthony provided a drawing showing a repositioned pool house farther back from the bluff that would not block our view of the bay and would be six feet from our property line. The drawing he provided at the meeting showed the pool house fifty-four feet from that, the top of the bluff, but that has changed. The new plan shows the pool house only forty-nine feet from the top of the bluff, which moves it closer to our porch and into, uh, our, our side view from our porch, view of the bay. But because it still does not block our view more than the existing cottage, and because it is positioned to block our view of the repositioned pool, we don't object to the location proposed on the new plan of the pool house. However, there is a four-foot-high fence that is to be run from the front of the pool house out onto the bluff that also has moved five foot farther out towards the bay. At the meeting, Anthony said it would be a see-through fence, perhaps with a classy wire or cable design, and that sounds good. But the new plan has that fence out beyond the footprint of the existing cottage. The plan that he showed me at the meeting, that fence was right along the front wall of the existing cottage, and we do object to that because we don't know what we will be looking at behind the fence, the see-through fence, and we fear it might be landscaping or that, uh, landscaping that would not be see-through and so block our view of the bay more than the existing cottage does. So we're concerned that they moved everything forward, including the fence, and I don't, we don't know that that's necessary. We weren't, has not been discussed. It was a surprise to us. We would not object if the fence ran along the, the line of the existing cottage's front wall as it was shown at our meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
So bottom line, you have no objection?
Bottom line is, the reason that I'm here tonight is to say that if everything I was told at that meeting is true, and indeed some things have changed since the meeting, so I don't know, but if everything I was told at that meeting is true, then we can't object based on the things that I brought up at the first meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, uh, you want to...
Go ahead. Just to state, uh, we, the, the fence, the, get, the, um, the fences there as the, uh, pool enclosure will be forty-eight inches per code, and the, my clients aren't looking to block their view, so it will be some sort of see-through type of fence, obviously meeting the less than four-inch requirement for anything passing through it, but, um, you know, they're not doing, they're not going to put a solid fence up, that's not their intent, so.
Okay.
Just want to state that.
Tough trip. And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
And state your name and your address.
Donald Carberry, and I live at one three six five Peconic Bay Boulevard, and I also own one three six nine Peconic Bay Boulevard. Phyllis Lane actually runs between my property, two properties. There's an easement that is associated with this property. Originally, it was an estate, and basically it was broken down, and in order for the front houses to get to the main boulevard, in order for them to get to the main boulevard, they had to turn around and come up with an easement. This is a copy of the easement from the title company. Should I?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I come, came here probably to get this adjourned because the property was never posted, so no one had any knowledge that there was even a, a, a hearing tonight. I touched the, the driveway I touch, and therefore I should have been notified by certified mail because I touch his property, even though it's a roadway, but he, I was told that he owns the roadway, so therefore I should have gotten the notice, and there was no posting of any sign this week whatsoever. I noticed the post, the sign posted as of today that it was placed there, but yesterday, before one o'clock, it was not there, and from Thursday to yesterday, it was not posted.
Well, I think we're going to have it adjourned anyway, but go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to give you a little bit of...
So if they repost it again, it'll just stall it for another week or two weeks?
I called the town on Friday saying that it wasn't posted, and...
It wasn't?
No.
Okay, according to what you saw, so, so we'll ask him if he wants to dispute that or not. We didn't view that, we didn't go to the site the second time. We've only been there one time.
Okay.
I went to the site one time. I can't speak for the others. So if that's the case and he has a dispute for it, we'll listen to both and then we'll decide what we're going to do, but most likely, like the chairman said, we'll probably just put it off for another two weeks until we get it squared away. Was the, was it posted legally in the papers? Tracy? Re-legally posted? Repost?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Yes. Correct. But because they changed the, the property, the building, it's happened to be re-re-reposted. Okay.
We had to do mailings and post.
Right. It's like a do-over.
Okay. Well, we're going to be adjourning it for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Anyone else to be heard? Any other neighbors?
Anybody on Zoom? So Anthony, what do you have to say about the posting? Wasn't there, was there?
No, no, I, I believe it was done. I, I trust my office. Like I said, I didn't do it myself, but, um, uh, in regards to the mailings, those are provided by the town. We, then we mail them out.
So just to make everybody happy, how about in two weeks, you put up a sign so everybody can see it?
Sure.
I want a date stamped.
That's fine. I'll make sure this time we have a picture of it.
And put it on the right...
I mean, I, I, I could bring the person that posted and put them right here in front of you. I mean, uh, you know, I, I just talked to him when, when I heard that.
All right.
You know, we've had issues in the past with signs blowing down, but I don't think that was the case here. It's been pretty beautiful, so. But, um, I guess, uh, the adjournment's fine, I understand that. I'm just, I just wonder if we, uh, should we, are there anything on the drawings that the board has questions on or things that...
Let's give us a little time. We have some more to...
I appreciate that. Okay. Thank you very much.
On Zoom, is there anyone on Zoom?
We lost the resolution. No. Mr. Chairman, we're going to...
They asked them to unmute, they haven't unmuted. If you can hear me, Matthew Shamadis, if you're for this, can you please unmute and let us know?
Hi, yes, we're here.
Yes, what are you, which appeal are you on for?
Uh, the one that we're currently talking about.
Okay.
All right. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
Uh, Matthew Shamadis, thirteen seventy-three Peconic Bay Boulevard.
Okay, you have the four.
Okay, yeah, I, we're just, um, uh, we're on, uh, next door to, um, to Janet Dan and uh, just, you know, wanted to say like, e-every, every house around here that's been modified and, and it's always stayed in the footprint, and I think that, yes, the, the plots are thin, but, um, you know, over the years, they've, they've been set up in a way to, to give everyone space and privacy and to respect each other, and it, and it works out very nicely. Everyone who's, you know, improved upon their home has kept the, the footprint where it is, and it's, it's worked out very nicely, and, you know, to say that, um, that, that it's irrelevant that, uh, that Corley owns multiple properties and two next to each other, it's, it's, it's being set up, you know, um, not, not as a single property, but it, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a pool that's being shared between two houses. It's, it's just, you're, you know, you're, you're letting one property improve itself to, you know, uh, to, to the detriment of another, and it, it's just, it just does not seem like, you know, it does not seem fair, it does not, it's not in the character of the neighborhood, and, um, you know...
All that pool and a pool house.
And, and, yeah, that, that's just it. I mean, it's just, it's just that simple. I mean, it, it, you can't, you, you can't allow, you know, one person to improve upon their property to the detriment of another, and it, and it's, it's a, it's clearly, you know, you know, not beneficial, um, to, to one, to one party, and, and we just, we just wanted to voice our opinion, saying, you know, we don't, we don't fair, you know, think there's equity here, so, um, that's really all I have to say. And yes, and as far as my wife wants to ma-make it clear that there was no sign posted, so whoever, whoever...
We're going to have them repost it, okay?
Yeah. All right, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Step up for the court. And just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do, yes.
State your name and your address.
John Fallon, twenty-three Phyllis Lane, Jamesport. With my permanent, uh, I have three addresses.
Pull that mic down just a little.
Yeah. Stick it to the mic, just a sec.
My primary residence doesn't matter what I address.
State your name and your, do it over here.
John Fallon, two oh six Roxbury Road, Garden City, New York. In reference to twenty-three and twelve Phyllis Lane. So just as, um, first, I, I hope that we could all be friends after this. It seems like it's getting very tense. I just, I don't want to feel like I'm, sound like this big monster here, I'm just out trying to improve my house. I just want to talk about the corporation, you know, going after this. It's Corley LLC. Corley, my son's name is Cory, my, my daughter's name is Emily, it's Corley. One of the piece of all to my children. It's not a big corporation, it's a family, uh, for due tax reasons and so forth, insurance. So it's not this big corporation going out there eating up all the land. I've been on the land now, I bought twenty-three almost fourteen years ago, I bought, um, twenty-two? Oh, thirty-two, sorry, um, seven, eight years ago, and within reason, it was twelve, and they're all adjoined, um, but it's, they, if you get asked, they're all the neighbors, we keep them well, maintain it, maintain the land, and I, you know, we're not looking to do anything bad here, just to improve our home, and hopefully make it a retirement home for me and my wife is really the plan. So I just want to be noted on that. With the thing about being notified, the lane is on, is owned by twelve, um, twenty-three Phyllis Lane, which is, is going down that lane. Twelve is, is the property that we're talking about, does not own the lane going down, so I don't think it has to be notified because I don't think that land is now touching his property, so he has to be notified by, um, certified mail. Not a hundred percent sure over that, but I think, do you understand what I'm saying with that?
We do. I understand.
Okay, that's, that's really all I want to say. Just, we're just trying to improve our property, and we've, we've, we've tried to meet, and with the meetings, yes, they got postponed, and we kept moving around the meetings, just trying to make it the best, and because it impacted, um, the, probably to the east the most, that's where we kind of stationed, because he actually couldn't make the meeting, the first meeting, so we postponed it, and we kind of moved, trying to make all the schedules work, and it was kind of difficult, so it wasn't purposely done, we just tried to did it, and we did with the most impact. So that's really it, so I'm just trying to, just trying to make it improved, that's all, so. Thank you.
All right, if nobody else is the, heard on this matter, what's, uh, you have anything else to say, Anthony?
No, sir, I just wanted to thank you and have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move appeal number twenty twenty-three dash one three, twelve Phyllis Lane, Jamesport, New York, to June, adjourned to June eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see you folks in a couple weeks. Have a good evening.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero two four, Christopher Bada, eleven Oak Street, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash ninety-three dash one dash ten, RB forty zoning for variances in or relief from town code chapter three oh one dash fifteen A one B. Proposed setback beside street line is forty-two point five feet when fifty feet required. Chapter three oh one dash fifteen A one B, existing rear yard setback is two point five feet, minimum required is twenty feet. And chapter three oh one dash seventeen, proposed impermeable surface twenty-two percent when maximum level is fifteen percent, adjourned from April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
It's morning last night, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if I need to do it because this is a new hearing.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Robert Stromsky, I reside at, uh, forty-four Circle Drive in Jamesport. I am the architect for the client. This is an application that, uh, you have heard prior, uh, under a different hearing, uh, and also then granted the variances sought in relief. I believe what had happened was the, uh, adjacent property owner had taken legal action against the town and my client because of that decision. I don't really know the legal ramifications, but that's why we're here today, to, uh, the town decided to reopen the hearing. With that in mind, Mr. Bada and I had some numerous conversations about the design of the detached garage, and Mr. Bada tried, uh, to discuss with me if there was any ways that they, we could possibly, you know, make some additional concessions, even though we were granted the relief sought. One of the things that we had tried to do is to lessen the mass of the building, so the original design, uh, showed a, more of a mansard roof on the gable ends, uh, which kind of would, uh, present itself as a larger mass, uh, so we, uh, changed that design to be a true cape, so it's just basically a gable with, uh, a gable dormer on both sides. We'd also lessened the plate height of the second floor. We'd also lessened the plate height of the second floor. Uh, so, uh, originally we were using a, a pre-cut, um, stud to give us a regular eight foot one plate height. Uh, we decided, uh, uh, again, with Mr. Bada's decision to drop that to a seven-six, uh, which is what I feel is kind of the minimum that you would need, uh, for proper headers above windows. Windows would be at, you know, a decent sightline, uh, for the, you know, occupants that are inside the building. So with that, um, you know, Mr. Bada's made some concessions, uh, in addition, um, to, you know, what was done under the previous, uh, application. So, you know, just to be aware that the building that you see here is slightly smaller in height, about six or seven inches in height. Uh, and the appearance of the, uh, east and west, uh, elevations would be a little bit less in mass due to the, uh, cape style architecture that we've decided to do. So I just wanted to point that out, that there were some design changes that were made from the prior, uh, application. Other than that, the impervious service, the issue that we have, the sanitary system, which, uh, in my opinion, I believe is just about, um, approved, uh, barring some covenants that need to be filed because the sanitary system is within the driveway. Um, so we're very close on obtaining the, the full approval on the sanitary system. So the placement of the building, you know, as stated before, really can't move due to the requirements from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services based on the new, um, alternative design system for the sanitary. So the nitrites will be much less due to this project because we are putting in the new innovative alternative system for the sanitary. And that will be the sanitary for the detached structure and the main residence. So it's going to be a system that's going to combine for both. So if the board has any other questions, I believe Mr. Bada was going to just speak on, uh, the legal terms of it.
I just have a couple of questions. I noticed that if I can remember correctly, the last time we were heard on a prior case, the stairs were on the other side. Why would they move them to the other side?
We moved them over to the other side, uh, because Mr. Bada was hoping to get more of a symmetrical look for the windows to the street. Um, so we couldn't really have the windows symmetrically on the gable end, which would be towards the east, uh, because the stair was running up. When we redesigned the second floor, uh, the stair couldn't work that way because we actually shortened the dormer width on the second floor.
So you had a balcony up there the last time.
We also had a balcony which we removed. Correct. So now there were sliding doors to a four-foot balcony on the south face. That has also been removed. Um, and there's now just windows on that second story that have views of the water and obviously the adjacent properties.
So, and there is really no other way to position the building more towards the sanitary system, right?
No, because we've, what needs to happen is not only do we need to fit the system, but the Suffolk County Health Department also requires fifty percent expansion, uh, locations as well. So we really can't move that system. It's pretty tight. Um, we also had to raise the grade slightly because of the depth of water. So that's also a factor as to the placement of the sanitary system. We can't really push it.
So does the sanitary system still require ten-foot separation under the code?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Rob.
And kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self help, God?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Christopher Bada, eleven Oak Street, Jamesport, Jersey, uh, Jamesport, New York. Two seventy-one South Franklin Turnpike.
New York.
Proof of service. Oh, sorry. I submitted the proof of service to Tracy this morning. Uh, she may be here in a while. So as Rob said, we're here for the resubmission of revised plans for replacement of our existing one-car garage with a full bathroom and storage area, uh, with a two-car garage with full bathroom and storage loft space. Uh, Rob has already gone over the technical details of how we modified the plans to, uh, further mitigate impact. But in this litigious society, I feel it may need to make a record as to the criteria for the granting of this area variance. Simply put, there is precedent for the board's granting of these variances. And the relief requested will most certainly not produce an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a substantial detriment to the nearby properties. It will not block access or views set forth in the photographs I'd like to present as exhibits. Present this as exhibit one. There are three copies.
We'll share.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. So those photographs, as I think you've seen at the last hearing, are of the surrounding properties and of my property, uh, along with the buffering and the landscaping and, uh, the surrounding properties and their structures there. The landscaping will remain or be replaced by arboretis to shield any new, uh, gar- garage that we're putting in there. Further, other properties have been granted similar variance relief in the past. In fact, contrary to the testimony of my neighbor last year, in two thousand eleven, the Scharf property was granted variance relief for construction of a two-story garage of approximately twenty-one feet height and for impervious coverage of eighteen percent, where fifteen percent was permitted. I want to present that as an exhibit. The two thousand eleven approval. And I'll submit that as exhibit two. This is appeal number eleven dash thirty. Scharf. As you can see from that, I would note that, uh, service of the notice of that variance was improper. Nevertheless, even if I had been noticed about it in two thousand eleven, I wouldn't have objected to it. I would have no objection to his variance relief going from, uh, eighteen percent impervious coverage and a two-story garage of twenty-one feet, which is just off, uh, his property line. Just recently, on March twenty-third, twenty-three, this board granted variance relief to ten Center Street in Waterview Terrace. The board granted permission to construct a two-story garage with living space. Actually, that had a kitchen and everything. And permitted impervious coverage of thirty-nine percent where fifteen percent is permitted. Also allowed expansion of non-conforming use on this one, a point one acre lot for accessory structure expansion. I'd like to present that as exhibit three, although I know the board has that in their files. Also, uh, my neighbor to the east, um, the Bakers were granted a variance for a two-story garage in, I believe that was two thousand and seven. And even just at our last meeting, thirty-seven Brookside Avenue, Porfelesky, I don't have the, the, uh, resolution because it's not passed yet, uh, but was granted a variance for impervious coverage and a two-story garage with loft space and art studio, which is very close to the property line. And that was at the last meeting. So these are only examples within Waterview Terrace. There are other undocumented garages with loft space in Waterview Terrace and Morningside Drive, and many examples of other similarly granted relief in the neighboring community and throughout Jamesport and Suffolk here. As for the other criteria for an area variance, we explored other options, but any relief sought would require variance relief. As Rob testified to earlier, uh, we are hamstrung a little bit by the fact that, uh, we are doing a new septic system. Uh, we're really just replacing what is there with an added garage space and storage space and loft and removing a standalone shed. So our impervious coverage is only going up from twenty to twenty-two percent. Uh, we also took away, as Rob talked about, some of the design elements in the original design, the gambrel roof, the patio, the sliding glass doors, the windows on the Scharf side. We put the stairway not only there to allow more windows facing Oak Street, but to eliminate windows facing, facing the Scharf side. So there's no windows on the bottom floor facing Scharf. It certainly will not be too great a non-conformity for the neighborhood since we are only seeking twenty-two percent impervious coverage, as I said, where our neighbor to the west with a large home and similar garage is eighteen percent coverage. Uh, and the board recently saw fit to allow thirty-nine percent in coverage around the corner from our property. Further, there will be no impact on the environment. In fact, the septic system replacement, which brought this all about, will improve the environment by replacing a failing system with all proper permits, with an upgraded system. We are not just putting in a replacement ring in the dead of night or in the dead of winter, uh, without permits. So this also is not a self-created hardship or difficulty because we are essentially, due to the septic upgrade, replacing what presently exists. It is also a lawful pre-existing structure. So for the foregoing reasons, and as what I did want to put on the record, the legal requirements of an area variance, we believe we have met the criteria for an area variance and will adhere to any conditions or landscaping buffers that the board may include as conditions, as with our previous approval from last summer. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please step up. And kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self help, God? State your name and your address.
Paul Scharf, Keenan and I live at eleven Bayside Avenue, Jamesport, New York. I have a letter with exhibits, my attorney, and I apologize for only one copy. I'd like to submit to the board and to the record. And my attorney emailed a copy to Anne Marie Pruden, town attorney.
It's Prudenti, but that's okay.
I'd like.
Go ahead.
As Mr. Bada indicated, and he quoted me, he's absolutely correct, and it was my error. Cause last year, when we had the meeting, I was asked under oath, did I ever have any variances? In fact, I admit, I said I had no variances. Then I found out that, again, when my builder built the building, I never came to a meeting. I didn't know how this works. So I said, I never had a variance. So then I looked into it and I did see, as Mr. Bada mentioned, I guess we built it a garage, not living, it's all storage, two stories. And, and trying to know.
You take your privileges today.
Yeah. It's, it's two stories, but, oh, no living space. And the, the ground, I, the, the impervious space, yes, was fifteen in the old garage. We went to eighteen. So that's a three percent. Again, it didn't affect any of my neighbors, left, right, back, forth. Mr. Bada said he wouldn't object. My neighbors in series didn't object. I didn't even know there was a hearing to know that we had any objections, but nobody ever said anything. Neighbors across the street never blocked anything. And the garage that was replaced was exactly where the other one was. Yes, it was enlarged. Didn't move it anywhere. Didn't decide to place it elsewhere. So that's not my first comments, but I had.
So Mr. Scharf, are you opposed to this new proposal?
Yes, because it's not a new, excuse, it's not a new proposal. We were here last year. Yes, it was.
It made some changes, so.
Yes. The, they were called, just, the justification.
I know that. I know that.
The, the, yeah, all right. The, the changes were cosmetic in a sense. Number one, if I, if I can refresh your memory, the first time we met here last year, the drawings that Mr. Bada submitted, he said was twenty-eight feet. And I showed the gentleman enough, right, I came up with the drawings. We had it was thirty-two. At that meeting, Mr. Bada said, oh, I'll drop it to twenty-eight. So it wasn't that he was going to drop something. It was an error in the actual drawing submission that was only twenty-eight feet. It was thirty-two feet, but was twenty-eight feet on the drawings. So then he changed it. And then what happened? The drawing, we had another meeting. He didn't meet with any of the neighbors. He kept the same drawing. So now we came back. It's the same footprint. He took off the balcony and he moved the door from one side to the other. And that's even closer to my property for the egg entrance going in, going into the garage upstairs to the living space.
So I take it you're opposed?
Oh, yes, I should have.
So you know that this is just an area variance, right? This is just for setbacks and that's it at lock.
Well, when you, yes, yes. My son, Michael.
Okay, come on.
Step up, Michael. And raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self help, God?
I do.
State your name and address.
Michael Scharf, um, fifteen Third Avenue, Port Washington, New York.
That's fine.
Is it not? Okay, there we go. Um, so this, I, I understand that, um, I saw the variances on the application. One of the variances had dropped. Um, in the, uh, prior hearings in July, there was a non, um, non-ancillary use variance, whatnot. And that's kind of, um, when we filed the article seventy-eight, it was a use variance that he was seeking. And it still is a use variance on the plans as they exist. Like my dad said, there really have been no material revisions, uh, made to this from the very initial revisions, except for that four-feet kind of correction. Um, and to the person who brought it up, the staircase and the door is now actually two and a half feet now off of our property line, which is worse for people coming and going.
Very interior, so it shouldn't make any difference.
Uh, well, just for traffic and whatnot. Right now, it exists a, and I have a video to show, but.
Traffic?
It's a quiet garage.
Are you talking about like his family?
Foot, foot traffic. Yeah, noise.
Foot traffic, oh.
Yeah, like, cause we're, yeah. And, and I have, you know, picture, uh, let me just show you this picture.
So would you be happy if we moved the stairs back to the other side? That would end it?
What, what would we be happy about? And what we, what we?
Yeah, wait till you get to the mic.
I'm just curious.
Take it easy.
More than anything else. How do you make neighbors happy? I'd like to know.
That's, so I re- I, I read the transcript. I wasn't here for the initial hearing back in July of two thousand twenty-two.
Right.
But you told Bada, Scharf, Series, work it out, come back to us, right? And we had a hearing in two weeks. And I think you were debating, like, how long should we wait? Like a month or something? And Chris said, because he knew he was just going to take that four feet off to make the correction, no other changes happened. He didn't consult with any of the neighbors for any good faith to address our legitimate and serious concerns. And he came back with basically the same proposal. So he didn't listen to the board. He came back. He didn't consult with us when he said he did. Um, I've reached out to him. I reached out to him last week to try to talk to him. Where, if he wants to, number one, just legally, it is a non-conforming structure. He bought the property. This isn't self-inflicted. I've researched and seen that he hasn't shown us why this is the only alternative that he has to demo his garage. The leach field that he's proposing has to be four feet above like water grade. There's other, uh, systems called like a gravel trench system that actually requires two feet less grading. And he's looking to raise it two feet. That, that may not.
Is that according to Suffolk County Health Department?
This is from a civil engineer who does a lot of work in Suffolk County.
Okay.
But again, like, this is the stuff that isn't before on the record to the board in making their decisions, which is really important. Um, not only that, self-inflicted, he bought the property knowing this was here. This isn't something new. Um, and then also, uh, talking to the civil engineer, um, you know, it's very hard, based on the information we have, to understand these leach fields and the retaining walls and all of that, right? But a retaining wall will have to be whatever height it ends up being along Oak Street. There can also be a retaining wall along the garage. There are methods to do this where you don't actually have to demo the garage. And even in his application originally, he said, I'm ripping up the driveway. I might as well go ahead and do the garage. So, so a lot of, there's just so many questions with regard to this. Despite all of that, like, if he wants to expand this one-story garage, and you can see from the picture, you can see the steep of the roof. Like, the top of it is fifteen feet. It goes down to eight feet. That's how like sharp it is. That's why it's not overbearing on us, right? He wants to do a two-story structure and he actually increased the height, uh, which is in my letter. Um, so he, he moved the door, he increased the height, um, and he kept the location. So there's really not any revisions. And the bathroom is still above, which he intends, as he's always has from the beginning, to use it as living habitable space. I, I don't know why the applicant did not put the use variance on here. I feel like it's because they understand how hard of a burden that is. So for the record and in the letter, like, I think that's an error by the building inspector and that needs to be corrected. Uh, the building inspector who, um, gave his, uh, uh, variances that he had to sought the same exact day, April thirteenth, that, uh, uh, Chris happened to sign his application and notarize it. So I don't know why that got dropped. Um, but not to backtrack, like, for a compromise? Yes, we're open to compromising. But if you don't deny this crazy ridiculous structure, and the reason why I say this is, without going into all the examples. is, without going into all the examples that were submitted after the board kind of closed their submission process back in August of twenty-twenty-two, Chris's architect submitted the examples, right? If you look on Google Maps or anything, this property is really unique. All the other properties, many of the ones that he mentions that are like apartments or whatnot, are in the rear yard, a regular street with a regular, you know, yard or whatever. You look at Waterview Terrace and where our properties are, we're along the water, and then it extends to Bayside Avenue. Except, the Series and the Bada, for that lot going from the water to Bayside, is split with two owners. All of the rest have that. So when you talk about like my father's garage, nobody had an issue with it because it didn't really make any difference. It was like many of the other ones right there on the street. This is different. This is, this is, you're walking from my, from Bayside up the driveway, it is halfway on the front yard, two-and-a-half feet off of it, and because of the steepness of the roof, fifteen and then eight, it's quaint, it fits in with the property, like, it's not something that like when my parents bought it, it's anything. What he's proposing with two stories and it is a box-like structure, if you look at the drawings, is overwhelming, it's obnoxious. We've talked to realtors and I have one in the letter that shows that it will, to appreciate the value marketability of the property, it is right in your face. I mean, I welcome anybody from the board to come to look on both properties, have access on it and to really see it. It's kind of scary and like, we're willing to compromise, but unless you deny it, Chris has no incentive to compromise. We've even said, and I've said in the letter, and we said in our previous letter in the hearing, you want to expand it to make it a two-car garage? That's fine. You want to extend it even further so that you can have storage? That's fine. But to make this non-conforming ancillary use, whether he uses it for a rec room, a bedroom or whatnot, regardless of that, to put a two-story structure on this, when also there may be grading that he raises another two feet, is really detrimental to my parents' property, and I won't speak for the Series, but for theirs as well, including specific water views for them. So extend it, get the extra storage that you want, get a two-car garage. I mean, you know, there are many ways and alternatives to slices, but there's been nothing from the very first proposal, if you look at the very first proposal to what is now, it is not, it is not materially different and it shows that he has not worked with us i-in any way, because it shows the revisions that have not been made.
This is a two-car garage.
I'm sorry.
It's a two-car garage.
Chris Bada?
Yeah.
Isn't yours one and a half? It's not a true two. You don't have two cars.
No, I mean, the elevation that's shown here is a two-car garage.
Oh, is that the proposal?
It's a proposed garage. This is the new garage.
Yes, I'm sorry, what's...
Have you seen it?
Yes, oh, yes, 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 yes.
Okay, this is the one they moved the stairs to the other side?
Right, which is worse.
Two-car garage.
Yes.
So you're saying he should put it in a two-car garage? Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah, without the second floor.
Without the second floor. We're trying to compromise in that way. We're not saying which I think we...
It doesn't warrant the second floor.
Absolutely not. That is, I think this...
Like what your father has on his house, on his garage.
He does, but the point that I'm trying to make is that...
So he calls it storage like your father's house?
No, because, because...
And it's still not okay?
No, because every property has to be dealt with on the merit, but here's the thing.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, but...
But this is, right, but this is the difference in the layout of the property. No neighbor has had a problem with that. The Series are here, they can...
His house is massive.
I'm sorry?
His house is massive.
We are also double the size. The lot size is half the size of my parents' property. And it is on the street, it is a different layout, it is a different thing, and this is steps, as the picture shows, from my parents' front door. These are legitimate concerns and it's a unique layout that I've explained, that is different from every other property in Waterview Terrace for a non-conforming structure for a self-inflicted ask.
Excuse me, sir. What's your name?
My name? Michael Scharf.
Michael. Mr. Scharf, you know, we've listened to all the testimony and we've had all the pictures and everything, and people bought in this area because they wanted to be in this area. And I have a map where I have like seven sites of people that took a garage and made it into two, double garages and even have storage and maybe living space on, in Waterview Terrace, okay? So I don't know what everybody's so upset about. When you're in your house, okay, I'm sorry for pointing at you. Just want to make sure I'm talking to you.
Yeah.
When you're in your house and you come out the back door, or what is it, the front door where you're looking at?
The front door.
Mr. Bada's house, right?
Will you come out the front door, we face the garage that's there now.
Right, is that, there's a door there, right?
Yes.
And there's a hedge there, right?
There's a hydrangea bush that's...
I know, I saw pictures, it looks like it's four foot or more.
Oh, no, the picture that you see there that I submitted, that is the view from the bottom of the steps of our front door. That's the view today.
Front door, is that the, that's facing south? Is that what it is?
That is facing Bayside Avenue. That is, that is the picture.
Okay, let's back up to the words facing south, was facing Christopher's house.
South is the water, so there's no door facing his.
What is there in front of that house there? Your house or your father's house? What's the land? I've been there, I forgot.
That would be, that would be water and beach in the back of my father's house, the south side. And that's, and, and, and yes, that's it, from the house that my parents knocked down and rebuilt for more living space, which Chris could certainly do.
So that area, is that an area where you lounge or you sit or you have barbecues or what do you do back there?
Well, it's in the, I'm sorry, the...
The backyard or the front yard coming through the street?
I'm talking about the side of the house that faces the bay, that faces Mr. Bada's house.
Well, it doesn't face his house, it's adjacent to his house.
It has a view of the bay.
So we have no problem with him building on his house and variances, yeah.
So when you're there, what do you do on that side of your home, the south side? What do you do there, outside?
Well, we enjoy the water and the beach.
You enjoy the water?
And the beach, yes.
The south side is the beach. The north side is going to Bayside Avenue where you step out of our front door.
Are you guys behind this house?
No.
No.
And in our front yard, in our front yard, which is where you come out of the front door and you see the garage facing, that's where my kids play, that's where we spend a lot of time, and that's where this two-story proposed structure would be shadowing right on our two-and-a-half feet of our property line.
Okay, so you're facing the garage or you're looking at the garage that he's proposing? Is that correct?
When you walk out the front door, yes, correct.
Thirty feet from my front door.
Facing it, yes.
Okay. I guess I still want to know what you do out there. I mean, when you're out there, are you sitting in chairs and are you looking at the garage?
Oh, out there by the, oh, where this is? I play with my, my kids all the time. Our front yard is the bulk of our yard. That's where the grass is, that's where we play and we reside.
And there's no hedge there?
No. There are, there are mature trees that will likely be knocked down in construction because it's only two-and-a-half feet off of the line, and they barely block the fifteen-foot top. There's nothing that's going to, no shrubs or anything will stop this two-story and the window. I actually have a video if this really helps you because it shows the...
That's all right.
Okay.
So can I just ask you, this correspondence from the law firm of Egan and Golden?
Yes.
Is dated today's date?
Correct.
And I think you stated you provided a copy to my office?
Via email, just so that you had a copy as well.
Well, I'll tell you, as of six P M., I had not received it via email. I mean, obviously, I'll acknowledge your receipt, that you handed it up, but I've been in my office...
Oh, no, understood.
Up until six.
Yes. I honestly did it because I didn't know if it was printing fast enough because I was racing here. And I, you're Anne Marie?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for the extension and, you know, for everything. So, so yeah, I'm gonna let my dad speak now, but, you know, we can answer any questions, but like, if you, anything but a denial will not have Chris addressed any of the legitimate concerns that we have that are in the record that are really detailed in there. And it's a great concern. We, really, my father, anybody in the community will testify to my father, he helps with the roads, we've been there, he's been in there for like forty years. Like, we don't want issues, we don't want issues with Chris, we want to work this out. He's not open to working it out, but, but if you actually deny this, then we can get somewhere because we want to be good neighbors and want to work it out.
How long ago did you build that house?
What year did you build the house?
Oh, eight.
So you built it in oh eight? Did you need a variance then?
Step up, whoa, whoa, step up to the mic.
Did you need a variance for that then?
I'll say no, but I apologize, I don't know. The building filed, you know, I never had, I never had to go to a hearing, I don't know. I truly don't know. I think if they would have found out, there would have been like the foil that you found at the garage, which again, I apologize for, but I, no, I don't...
So I wanted to know what the living conditions were at that time when you did your knockdown and rebuilt.
It was very similar to his house.
So I want to ask Mr. Bada a question, if you don't mind.
All right.
Mr. Bada, did you own the house at that time?
Into the microphone.
Into the microphone. Did you own that house at that time?
We've owned it since nineteen seventy-three, yes.
Okay, and when he built that house, were you opposed to that house?
Not at all.
And how big is that house? How many square feet is the house?
I don't know, it's giant. It's the biggest house in Waterview Terrace.
It's a pretty big-sized house, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
It towers looking down on our house.
That's what it appears to be on Google.
That's true.
So I just, that's all I have to say.
For the, for the first hearing and the second hearing, we also said like, we have no issue with Chris expanding the house and doing what we did because also they're very adjacent, they're very, they're adjacent to each other, right? So unless you're looking out the windows, and then Chris's father also put in really giant, like, trees that have grown since I was a kid because I think I would kick my ball and I'd be on the yard, so they've grown, if you go there, they're as high as the second story, so there's a lot of shield there. So like, we don't have a problem with, with him building on that. And also, I believe Chris's father owned the property beforehand and then it was transferred assigned or through deed afterwards, so that could have been recently, I'll let him speak in the last five or ten years or so. Well, when these variances and restrictions were in place.
Can I just ask you a question? The trees that you were talking about that were planted by Mr. Bada and are now, what did you say?
Oh, they're very tall, they're all, yes.
And surround the garage, huh?
It took like thirty-five years.
Those trees are between your two houses.
We don't like them, they block a lot of air and light or whatnot, but he did that for screening and to my, because he mentioned that we're looking down on him, that's not the case.
So if he builds the garage, the trees don't block the house, the garages?
I'm sorry. No, no, that is, it is between...
I guess I'm gonna have to go back to the site and look again.
Please, because it is confusing about the property layout.
I do, I do, I do have a video though, just walking from Bayside.
Okay, sure. We're gonna go back and look at it again, we have to. I'm sorry that I've been a little rude. I apologize.
We're excited, we're all excited about this.
Losing my patience, that's...
But I think, I took the predigent pill, so I think I got some, I remember that.
I need to take it.
The question, I think, I did call the Board of Department, Board of Health, because I was confused about the recent, the recent drawings I got, because the prior drawings, I mean, it said bedroom, bedroom. So when I called the town, the Board of Health, they said, they said that what dictates a septic system is not the toilets, it's bedrooms. So Chris has four in the house, and he said the filing that they had last year was five bedrooms, and then it was still at five. But when they have now, they have a question coming back to Mr. Bada or whoever's doing for him, that they're not clear because it didn't say five bedrooms, it says a different terminology on the drawing. So the board said, or the Board of Health gentleman told me, that yes, they're looking at that, and there are other systems put in, and I asked the question about the existing garage, I asked about the grading, it looks like it's gonna go up a minimum of two feet. And I said, well, how, how high would the retaining wall? They said, well, the zoning board will determine that and they, they have limitations or whatever. But the issue is, there's a lot of questions about what is really required. Chris said, he's changing the existing to keep it the existing. Well, the existing is only a four-bedroom house cesspool. Yes. So when you, you come to visit the property, it could be better explained.
We'll take a look. We'll take it. Thank you.
Again, I apologize for, when I said, no, no, for the record, because about saying I had no variances...
You've already apologized, it's all right.
It's fine, it's fine.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident.
I do, I do.
State your name and address.
Jeanne Ann Scharf, eleven Bayside Avenue. Okay, so just to answer one of the questions is that, when we built our house, we stayed within the structure of like the, what it was.
The footprint.
Yeah, we just like kind of squared it off within that, that's why it's narrow, you know, it's kind of narrow. And, but anyway, just to clarify that. So some of the things that I wanted to say have already been said. The uniqueness of the location of his property is not like any other property, which is part of the problem to this, because everybody along that street owns from the beach to the road is by, is one, so it's one family. And, but his is shared, so that makes it smaller. The structure that he's building on this new application, according to the diagram, the structure is now from nineteen and a half feet, which was the last one, is now twenty-one feet, eight and three-quarter inches.
You can inch it up, drop your mark.
Oh. Okay, 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 so, so. So I guess the primary thing is that we have been willing to work with Chris. Chris, let me see, even at the first time that we wanted to speak to him, at the last minute when we saw the drawing from conversations before we saw the drawing, it was like, wow, this is like huge. And my husband did call him and say, you know, we can't approve this. We came to the meeting and we said that. Then the board had said, work with your neighbors, but the same thing came out. I had approached Chris myself to try to get a conversation, but it really didn't go very far because he kind of indicated to me that no one can tell me what I want. So that kind of closed the door and we didn't really have a very fruitful conversation. I just feel that the structure itself is from a non-conforming structure, which it is, is so overwhelming and the fact that it is, as he has put, as he has commented for before, oh, it's in the letter, okay. So that's habitable, it's habitable space, it just changes the whole texture of it. And, and I did look into the foils of the other houses, there are fifty-six houses in that community. What he's proposing to build is not common, it's not common at all within those homes. If you look at how things are used. So I mean, you really have to please relook at this. It is, it's just so overwhelming, okay?
Thank you very much. Good night, thank you.
Chris, did you have any meetings with these folks?[1649.83] Step up to the mic.
We met last year, and the first comment that Mr.-
No, I'm talking recently.
No, well, because they sued me. So, that kind of, you know, we talked through counsel.
There goes the neighborhood.
Yeah, you know.
Okay, thank you.
But we did make changes, as Rob indicated.
Sorry, you wanted to say something?
Doesn't matter what you do, doesn't matter.
Go ahead, quick. No, no, step up, get up there.
The lawsuit, we're not litigious, we don't want to sue, and Article seventy-eight was the only thing we could do, and that's called a lawsuit, so.
Understood.
Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Bob Siri, uh, we reside at seventeen Bayside Ave., Jamesport, New York. We just want to be on the record, I've spoken before, uh, at previous meetings, that we are against it, the, the size of it, we are just behind, with the property line, just behind the garage. Um, it does tower over, it's bigger than our house, a lot bigger than the house, height-wise, it's a lot bigger, square footage, I'm not exactly sure the square footage, but I believe it's a little larger than our house. Um, and just to be on the record, all these houses that we discussed with the large garages, I know was mentioned, is twice the size, so it's like building a garage on our property. That's what they, that's essentially what the other houses did. So the size of the house, the size of the garage, is tremendous, it overshadows our backyard, and with a, a window up there, so we lose some privacy, as well as any natural breeze, or anything like that, sunlight, but that's all I want to say, I want to state our concerns about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard?
No Zooming?
Okay, well. Oh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm gonna ask that the board consider adjournment. So I move that the appeal of twenty-three dash twenty-two of Christopher Bodder, eleven Oak Street, tax map number six hundred ninety-three dash one dash ten, uh, to be adjourned to June eighth.
So moved. Mr. Zawiski. Hello?
Yeah.
Daniel.
I, I'm, I'm tempted to say, I, I, no, I, I don't vote for that. It's not gonna change what the vote's gonna be, but we, we have batted-
Mr. Whitmire. So you're a no vote?
I'm a no vote.
Mr. Whitmire.
I don't agree with this, but, uh, yes, we adjourned for a week.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye for adjournment.
We can go out and-
And I vote aye, so we'll see you folks in the next meeting.
We'll visit the site again, and we'll, uh-
Make a decision in the next meeting. Thank you very much.
No, we're gonna visit ourselves, sir.
We'll, we'll be okay. We do it all the time, so, thank you for offering.
Long as you don't have any loose dogs.
All right, next case. Call me tomorrow.
We're the, no, it's, no-
We're deciding next week.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Tracy, we have just wanted to make sure, go back to the background.
Yeah, get this stuff too. That's enough, we, you know, that's all copies. Mr. Cuddy. You're, you're the, you're the last one, Mr. Cuddy?
No, we have two more. We have two more.
All right, step up. Go ahead, let's have a reading.
Appeal twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two-five Everett Parker, three thirty-seven Northside Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash thirty-six dash two dash three, R B eighty zoning for variances and or relief from town code chapter three oh one dash twenty-nine A one C, where proposed pool is twenty feet from side property line on side street, minimum sixty feet required.
Just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Justin Phillips, NYCD Group Expediators and Drafters, one eighteen Baker Court, Island Park, New York, one one five five eight. Uh, I'm here tonight representing Rachel and Everett Parker, owners of three thirty-seven Northside Road, Wading River. Uh, we are requesting a variance from the Town Ordinance, Chapter three oh one, Section two zero nine A one C, for the installation of a proposed fifteen by twenty-six foot by fifty-four inch deep oval semi-in-ground swimming pool, buried twenty-four inches, in the rear yard of twenty feet from the rear side property line that runs along Oak Lane, where the code required minimum distance is sixty feet. The property is a pre-existing, non-conforming, fourteen-thousand square foot, regular-shaped, uh, flag lot, with a rear yard width of eighty-three feet. Due to the town code dimensional regulations adopted in two thousand and four, it is impossible for this property to comply with the town code as it exists. The benefit sought cannot be achieved by some alternative means, because the width of the, the lot provides a necessity for variance in order for them to construct a swimming pool to code. The neighborhood is predominantly residential, and the affected side street, which is Oak Lane, is not a highly-traffic street, it's essentially a, a public driveway, because it serves only two additional houses, so there's no through traffic there. Um, the difficulty the property owners experiencing is not self-created, as the lot, uh, it was pre-existing all the way back to the seventies, prior to the inflammation of the two thousand and four zoning code. And lastly, the board has granted similar relief to other properties in a R B eighty zoning district, under appeal numbers twenty eighteen dash zero four six and twenty twenty-two dash zero zero six.
Done with your homework.
That is all.
Mr. Cuddy, you have any objections to this, because you're the only member of the audience right now. And nobody else has an objection, let's have a vote.
No Zoom? We gonna talk about the letter we received in support with the condition?
Mm-hmm. Depends on the resolution. Which I will ask them to amend.
The clients did, uh, mention to me that the oldest surrounding neighbors were in support of this application, one specifically had a request that there be no drainage onto Oak Lane, which we agreed to and will acquiesce as per your property.
Okay.
And we'll put that in on, as a condition.
Accepted.
Okay. Is that Oak Lane?
Yes, it is.
I move that the appeal of Everett Parker, three thirty-seven Northside Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred thirty-six point two, there's three, residence, uh, B eighty, R B eighty zoning for variance and for relief from town code chapter three oh one dash twenty-nine A one C, where proposed pool is twenty feet from side property line on side street, minimum sixteen feet be required. In accordance with the application and sketches, and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, file will be granted, no drainage onto Oak Lane, is a condition of the, uh, approval.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Zawiski.
Hi.
Mr. Barnes.
Hi.
Mr. Whitmire.
Hi.
I vote aye, appeals been granted, paperwork within two weeks, good luck.
Fantastic, thank you all, have a good evening.
Mr. Cuddy, I apologize for keeping you this late at night.
Appeal twenty-twenty-
That's the way it goes.
Appeal twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two-six James Sullivan, one twenty-five Cliff Road East, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash twenty-eight dash one dash seventeen, R B eighty zoning for variances and or relief from town code chapter three oh one A one D, where proposed rear side, rear street line setback forty-three point three feet, minimum permitted is sixty feet.
Charles Cuddy, four four five Griffin Avenue, Riverhead, New York, for the applicant. I feel a little badly that I don't have more than just one application to make here.
You're gonna get it.
But this is a, a lot that's on East Cliff Road in Wading River, uh, that's close to the sand. The people there, the Sullivans, have a lot that's only eight thousand square feet, they have two small homes, their home that they live in is less than a thousand square feet. They just want to add to the back of it a twenty by twelve, uh, deck, and they are back from the, uh, area, instead of sixty feet, they're only back forty-three feet. Um, there is really no one that has any concern about this, and by the way, I, I did post this, I know there was a concern that it wasn't posted, but I posted it, I've been there every other day practically, looking at it, I wanted to make sure it didn't come down, but it was posted, and I have the copies of, of the, uh, photos from the first day, which was the seventeenth, until today.
Okay.
This, um, deck is really there so that they can actually look north and look at the sand, that's what they're trying to do. Their neighbor, the Borro Family Everglot Trust, has some foliage in its yard, and they've actually come to them and said, as soon as you get the deck, we'll cut the foliage down so you can look over the sand, for whatever that's worth. But it, it's, the neighbors, the only one that's affected whatsoever is that neighbor on the north. Um, I believe that it meets all the requirements of the code, the standards, certainly the neighbors, uh, haven't objected, and with the exception of that neighbor, there isn't anybody to object. Um, it's a small deck, uh, doesn't have any environmental impact, there really isn't any alternative, if they want to sit out in their yard, they need a deck right there. Uh, it's substantial, but it's only substantial because the current zoning, uh, takes a small lot and makes you go and ask for a variance. It's perhaps self-created, but they've owned this house, uh, for more than fifty years, so they were there before zoning. Um, I would ask the board to grant it, uh, so that they can actually sit out and use their deck.
Tracy, do we have any letters submitted on this file? Uh, there, I remember there was one letter that was submitted in, in, uh, Florida, if they were-
It was a letter in support, yes.
Yeah, I understand from them that all their neighbors agree that they, they can have this now.
Well, I'm trusty, one neighbor's gonna cut down the foliage, instead of putting foliage up, huh? Fantastic. Okay, nobody else to be heard on this matter, nobody on Zoom?
No.
Off we go. Let's have a reading.
Okay. Chairman, with reference to appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero-two-six, I move that the appeal of James Sullivan, one twenty-five Cliff Road East, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map six hundred dash twenty-eight dash one dash seventeen, residence B eighty, R B eighty zoning for variances and or relief from town code chapter three oh one A one D, where proposed rear street line setback of forty-three point three foot, um, where minimum permit, permitted is sixty foot, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector. So moved. Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Uh, what, oh, Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Zawiski.
Most definitely aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
So again, good seeing you, Mr. Cuddy, we apologize for keeping you-
Oh, no.
So late.
Bye seeing you.
Thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the me, uh, the minutes of the last meeting? Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ralph, if you're watching from your hospital room, get better, we miss you.
Listen to the doctor, and the nurse you're watching.
All right, I move the, uh, for adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chairman.